Okay, it looks like we have a pretty good group. What do you think, Mike? Should we get started?
Yeah, I think we should go for it. Let's respect the time of the folks that find on time.
Excellent. Okay, so welcome everyone to the first town hall meeting for the new Ocean Worlds working group. We're very pleased that all of you have joined us today. This meeting is going to be recorded. It should have told you that when you joined, but just for full disclosure, just a couple of logistical details. Here, why don't you go to the agenda? Yeah, so we'll talk about a few kind of ground rules, both for this meeting and for this working group, kind of moving forward. We will have some basic initial thoughts, including results from the the community survey that some of you filled out. And then depending on how many people we get and what level of discussion we have, we have some optional breakout groups that we might establish, or we might, we might just stay in a plenary session. And that'll kind of depend on how many participants we have. This town hall is scheduled to go from nine till 10:30 Pacific time. We understand if some folks will have to leave at the top of the next hour. And so again, we'll post some minutes from this meeting if you have to leave early, as well as the, we'll try to post the recording as well if we're able to. If you have any questions or issues during this meeting, you can use the chat. We can also use the chat for discussion, but let's try to keep it relatively on topic so that if if folks do have important comments or issues, that that we're able to see those. If you have, if you have something you'd like to add, you can use the raise your hand feature, you can put it in the chat, or you can just unmute. We'll see how, we'll see how things go. We do encourage discussion and participation. So this is, this is a town hall. This is not myself and Mike lecturing the community. We really want to hear what folks think and what folks have to say. So let's get started. So let me start off first with a few rules of the ocean. And so this is modified with gratitude from the Europa Clipper Code of Conduct and also with, with props to the Dragonfly Mission, which has rules of the airways. So here with the Ocean Worlds Working Group, we have the rules of the ocean. And so really, these should go without saying, but I'm going to say them anyway. Treat others with respect. Everyone who is here is here voluntarily, and we value everyone's participation. We expect that folks who are joining us act as active allies to all members of the Ocean Worlds Working Group, helping to guard against any forms of harassment, either in this meeting or moving forward. We hope that all of us will actively contribute towards a more inclusive, equitable, and accessible environment, demonstrating support for others. This includes interceding for others who are unwilling or unable to advocate for themselves. And please calmly consider your actions when you're challenged by someone who feels that those actions have caused harm. We understand that there are, there's a huge diversity of opinions, of backgrounds, of thoughts in our community. And we hope that any discussions that we have in this working group, in meetings, as well as moving forward, that we may disagree scientifically, we may disagree on the topic, but let's not let those attacks become personal. We may disagree with someone's scientific views, but that doesn't mean that we need to take it to a personal level of disagreeing with the person. So let's try to keep that separate and keep that in mind. And so this is really meant to be your Ocean Worlds Working Group. We value all voices and ideas that are presented in good faith, even if we disagree with them, or even if you personally disagree with them. Those voices are valued. And if you have any issues or concerns, please contact myself or Mike. Okay, so here is, if you're wondering why we've gathered you all here today. So the Ocean Worlds Working Group was established by a consensus, a community, it's sort of a community grassroots-driven working group. The charge, and so these words on this slide are what were given to myself and Mike by the leadership of the AGGs. So our charge is to work with OPEC, SBAG, and now Leadership to establish and organize a cross-AG Ocean Worlds Working Group. So that's what this is. We are supposed to lead the development of the Ocean Worlds Working Group Charter. We're supposed to cultivate an encouraging and inclusive environment to consider and discuss ideas and other input from the Ocean Worlds Community to determine common goals and needs. We're supposed to formulate an Ocean Worlds Working Group strategy to communicate evolving goals and needs of the Ocean Worlds Community up to NASA, and to advocate for the Ocean Worlds Community, present our findings and recommendations to the wider planetary science community through the AGGs and up through the PAC, as well as to communicate with leaders and members of relevant professional societies. And so one thing we want to do as a working group is really to bring in the voices of the broader members of our community, including those who are, who are earlier, at earlier career stages. And so for anyone who has, isn't fully, isn't fully involved in the NASA Assessment Group structure, some of these acronyms might be confusing, some of the structure might be confusing. And so do feel free to ask questions as we move along about how the work that we're going to do as part of this working group kind of fits into the overall hierarchy. But let me move through a little more kind of background material first. So next, okay, well, introduction. So who are these people who are talking to you? So Mike and I were chosen by a panel of folks who, who, who represented the Outer Planets Assessment Group, the Small Bodies Assessment Group, as well as the Network for Ocean Worlds, which is a research coordination network that has a leadership that's drawn from various funded ROSES proposals. And it's kind of a, an offshoot and a continuation of the former NASA Astrobiology Institute. And so Mike and I want to really express our gratitude to the selection committee for doing a careful job, and we hope that, that we can really represent the interests of the community. And we're really honored to serve in these roles. And we also want to recognize that, you know, we understand that many people applied for these positions. And so we want to make sure that everyone has a voice and is able to participate in this working group. So, hi, I'm Cynthia. My background originally was in astronomy and astrophysics and physics from Harvard, and then I did a PhD in planetary science with a minor geoscience from the University of Arizona, so I kind of spanned the range. I spent 15 years as a postdoc and a research scientist at the SETI Institute, which is a nonprofit research institute, soft money. So I understand the needs of soft-money scientists very well. And I've been at JPL since 2015, working on the Europa Clipper Mission, as well as other projects. My research background is really in image processing, change detection on active worlds. I've worked with image, impact gardening, impact cratering, surface, subsurface exchange processes, really on a wide variety of worlds, although icy ocean worlds are my favorites. But I've, you know, I've dabbled a little bit in Mars, as one does, as well as the moon, Venus, Io, and other worlds like that. I'm very interested in science communications and outreach. One of my other roles is as the Science Communications Lead for Europa Clipper. And I give lots of lectures, and I do panel discussions, and I've written a bunch of books. And my, my partner, I have five kids and a rabbit, and I do enjoy gardening in the little bits of free time that I get in between everything else. So let me hand it over to Mike.
Yeah, hi. I'm Mike Bland, the other co-chair. I have a Bachelor of Arts in Physics and Geology from a small school in Minnesota called Gus Davis Adalthus College, if you're wondering how to say that. My PhD is in planetary science from the University of Arizona, so a lot in common with Cynthia. I spent six years as a postdoc and a research scientist at Washington University in St. Louis. And I've been at the USGS now for about nine years as a research scientist, and I lead the Cartographic Products Development Group here. So my research interests have been in the tectonic and thermal evolution of ice-rich worlds. So I've done work on basically all of the ocean, the primitive ocean worlds out there at this point, or many of, the majority of them. The other thing that I've become quite interested in since coming to the USGS is improving the usability of planetary data sets. And so getting data out to the community in a way that lowers the bar for use of those products, and understanding the, how to kind of talk about and describe the quality of those products, for the most part, imaging products, topography products, things like that. I was a guest investigator with the Dawn Mission at Ceres, which was a lot, really a lot of fun. And I'm involved with the Clipper Mission as affiliate on the ice team. I'm married, have two kids, and they take up basically all my time, driving them around to their various activities. But we enjoy hiking and backpacking and traveling when we have more time. And I want to pause here, and not to put her on the spot, but we also have Leah Sacks helping us today, who will be taking some notes. And if you don't mind, Leah, I'll let you introduce yourself. Sorry to put you on the spot.
No worries. Yeah, I'm Leah Sacks. I'm currently at JPL doing an internship, but normally I'm a PhD graduate student at the University of Western Ontario, and it's great to be here, helping Mike and Cynthia.
Thanks, Leah. Okay, so after Cynthia and I were selected as co-chairs, we got together and we started thinking about what the Ocean Worlds Working Group, what the, what the purpose really is, or what our goals were as kind of co-chairs. And, you know, one of the first things that we really agreed on is that we need to hear from the community and what the community sees as the, the role of the working group is. And so I think many of you are aware that we put out a survey with some, just a few questions. We didn't want to take up a lot of people's time. And so I just wanted to talk for a minute about what the responses to that survey have been and how that kind of interacts with Cynthia and I's kind of understanding of what the Ocean Worlds Working Group is about. So as of last night, we had 27 responses. We're actually up to 30 now, so responses continue to come in, and we still, we continue to welcome those. This isn't, we'll leave this up. Anybody is welcome to kind of continue to add their comments to that. You can see that most of our respondents are kind of in the early to mid-career stage, which isn't too surprising. We have some folks that self-identified as a little bit later career, and a few students as well, but you can see the statistics there. We got a very interesting cross-section of responses to the basic question, what should be the primary goal of the OWWG? And I've grabbed 10 of these here that I think kind of can be collected, collected into different ways of saying the same thing. So I just wanted to read through some of these. These are copy and pasted from the, the survey, so I apologize if anyone was uncomfortable with these being displayed. But, so I just want to read through a few of these. Create a concrete and actionable Ocean Worlds Exploration Strategy. Establish a long-term strategy for exploration of Ocean Worlds. Does not just a list of all the things we'd like to do, but a logical program. Defining scientific areas the OW community should focus on and advocate for funding for technology developments, for life detection. Come up with a consistent coherent set of community priorities for Ocean Worlds and exploration, which is consistent with OW. Determine OW science and exploration priorities. Build multi-decade timelines for OW science and exploration. To provide a unified voice to NASA expressing the community's priorities. Provide a unified voice for interdisciplinary community of Ocean Worlds Research and Exploration. Assess priority questions for Ocean Worlds. Deduce how those questions can be addressed with missions and RNA-funded science and advocate for those. Mission strategy through working closely with, integrated with, with OPEC, and helping advance a coherent Ocean Worlds Exploration Plan Program Collective. And so you can see that there, you know, this is just 10 of, I think not all of the respondents answered this question. So this is 10 of the 24 responses. Many of the other responses were along a similar line. Some focused a little bit more on technology, some focused a little bit more on terrestrial analogs, thinking about Earth's oceans and things like that. But a lot of these were kind of the same basic thrust, which is to create an actionable Ocean Worlds Exploration Strategy. Based on, and this is, you know, what Cynthia and I interpreted kind of the charge of this working group to be. And so we felt that the, the kind of the community response is consistent with what our kind of initial thinking is. We are happy to continue to have discussion about what the goals of the Ocean Worlds Working Group should be, but I think there seems to be consensus in the community that Cynthia and I's kind of basic understanding is in, is consistent with what the broader community also expects from this working group. And so that's really nice to see. So I think the next step is to think about, you know, what do each of these worlds kind of mean? So, sorry, each of these words kind of mean. So the first thing that I want to think about is, is what does the word "strategy" actually mean? So when we talk about creating an exploration strategy, what, what does that entail? And I think, you know, we can learn a lot from the Mars Program about kind of the kinds of things that they have done. And they recently published what they refer to as their future plan. And within that, they have multi-decade science themes, they have actually four program initiatives, and they have an aspirational timeline. And I think this is all really valuable. And the program initiatives are interesting, if you go to their future plan, because if, you know, just, this is the, I think, the headings, the three headings, and, and these are directly applicable to basically what we want to do as well. So if you just swap out Ocean Worlds for Mars, you can see expanded opportunities for lower-cost, more frequent missions, right? We of course want that. Invest in key technologies, that's something critical for our community. And enable participation for all communities, it's really important, too. So as we move along, we want to make progress on, on each of these as we move forward. The Ocean Worlds Community is not the Mars Program. We talked about this a little bit at OPEC. The Mars Program is extremely well-staffed, well-funded. We are essentially a volunteer organization, but that doesn't mean that we can't come together and build a strategy that is similar to what the Mars Program has done, even if it's maybe not as glossy as the Mars Program is able to put together with the staff that they have. So there's a lot of lessons to learn from the types of things that the Mars Program has been doing. And I think I will hand this back to Cynthia.
Excellent. So, so one of the things we want to do is to kind of think about our, our goal for the Ocean Worlds Working Group. And, you know, Mike, I remember, I'm realizing that we didn't have a slide in here on the name. So that was something that was also in the survey originally, when we launched this and when we talked at OPEC, you know, we solicited some ideas and thoughts for a new name for this working group. And after, you know, we appreciate everyone's fun and creative ideas, but after a bunch of consideration, we've decided we're going to keep the name Ocean Worlds Working Group for a couple reasons. One is, it sounds like what it is. So there, there is merit in having a name that really reflects what the thing is we're talking about. And really, the second reason is, it's really easy to Google. It's a unique combination of characters that's not found in anything else. So if you put OWWG into Google, you get to our webpage at LPI very easily. So for those two reasons, we're going to keep it. We know it's a mouthful, so we're going to spell it OWWG, but that is pronounced Ocean Worlds Working Group. So, you know, it's fewer syllables if you say the full word than if you use the letters. So it's kind of a silly abbreviation. And yeah, Tim, so this is not an AG. So the AGGs are chartered by NASA. This is a working group, which is chartered by the AG. So it's kind of one, in the hierarchy, it's kind of a level, you know, below, or it's a cross-AG kind of working group. So it's similar to, there's a new DEIA cross-AG working group as well, which is kind of grassroots community-driven, too. And so this, this working group is similar to that. It's possible that one of our goals for the future would be to move toward an AG that has a more official position. And so that's something we can discuss moving forward. Okay, so, so enough on the name. So we're not going to, we, you know, we do appreciate everyone's creative suggestions, but we're not going to go there in this meeting. So some initial thoughts on our goal. So we really want to create an environment that facilitates the selection of missions to Ocean Worlds in our solar system. I think all of us are really in this for the missions, but there are a lot of things that need to get us to the missions. So we, in order to create this environment, we want to have a well-defined, multi-decade series of prioritized science goals and objectives. We want to think about how, you know, kind of a stable, a repertoire of missions might address multiple interconnected science goals in the community. In order to do this, we'll need a series of robust, well-costed mission concept studies to our high-priority targets. We're also going to need high-harsh technologies to help enable those innovative mission concepts. And as well, we're going to need a thriving research community. So it's about the missions, but it's not all about the missions. There's plenty of fundamental research, lab work, observations, you know, telescopic observations, et cetera, that are going to need to be done to really help to sustain our research community, as well as facilitate the scientific breakthrough, breakthroughs that are going to be necessary for these future missions. So this is really kind of what we see as, as this environment. And next slide. And so here are some possible science goals for us. So, and, and these are not in, these are potentially in a sequential order, in order of complexity, but they are not necessarily in a priority order. So one science goal could be to complete the inventory of Ocean Worlds in our solar system. Another one could be to characterize Ocean Worlds in order to assess their habitability, in order to search for biosignatures. Another one could be to determine how Ocean Worlds form and evolve, and to characterize their geophysics. So really, a more fundamental, you know, how do Ocean Worlds work? And then a fourth science goal could be the institute exploration of Ocean Worlds, either from the surface or from the subsurface, in order to do a direct search for biosignatures, as opposed to an indirect one. So these are, these are possibilities for Ocean Worlds, and these are possible science goals. And so these are, these are some of the things we're going to want to discuss moving forward. And, and yeah, feel free, if we have discussion during this initial, you know, this initial session, please let us, you know, please feel free to raise your hand or chime in in the chat, and we'll get to you. And I forget, Mike, where we were going to switch off again. Was it this one?
I'm not sure. I forget. I don't have it up anymore. But yeah, I can jump in here. So, so basically Cynthia and I sat down and, you know, just brainstormed a lot of the possible things that we could, could advocate for. And it may be, some of these, maybe all of these, in regards to how do we get more missions to Ocean Worlds? How do we improve technology development? How do we improve RNA? And so we've kind of just listed these here for discussion as we move along. And so this is not really to, to speak, you know, this is just to kind of start to plant the seeds for discussion later. So we could have additional PCMS opportunities. This was discussed quite a bit at the most recent OPEC meeting, if you were in attendance there, the importance of these PMCS studies, the value to them. And an important aspect of that, that was discussed, is the robust costing exercises, so that we have viable missions moving forward. How do we improve our opportunities for Ocean Worlds missions in discovery? What kind of things can we advocate for? In some ways, the Discovery AOs have evolved to make it a little bit more difficult for discovery missions. And so what do we need to do to, to, to change that pattern? The inclusion of Ocean Worlds in New Frontiers List is something that we have been actually quite successful at, I think, in the past as a community. And so we need to continue those, those efforts, and to continue to look forward to how, how do we improve the number of targets that are available on that list. And then, of course, continuing to mature flagship concepts for selection by the next Takedal Survey. That's really important. And considering, continuing to consider how to leverage international and private partnerships as well for missions to Ocean Worlds. See, slides one in advance. And I'll just take this one on, too, I guess, since I'm, I'm speaking. How do we get more funding for Ocean Worlds? Did I skip a slide? No, sorry. Ocean Worlds Research. So the PSIE selections just came out. I think there were four selected out of a group of 30-ish, I want to say, which is, you know, it's about what we were told to expect, but it's still, it's unfortunate that there's a lot of ideas out there that, that can't move forward. So how do we continue the PSIE? Is that something we want to do? What is the future of CDAP, which is a substantial part of the, the recent RNA funding that we've had? And do we want to kind of advocate or push for a new Outer Planets or Ocean Worlds RNA programs? These are all things that we can continue to consider as we move along. And I'll pass it back to you, Cynthia, here, I think.
Sure. Okay. So another really important aspect of this is to think about how we can infuse more Ocean Worlds technology development. So really, what we're thinking of as we move forward is, we need that scientific research, we need those mission concept studies, but we also need the technology development and maturation, so that when an opportunity arises for an Ocean Worlds mission, we have all of these components. And so one thing we can consider is an Ocean Worlds technology roadmap that thinks about, you know, everything from the mundane, like, like long-powered, low-temperature batteries, to the really exciting, like, you know, cryobots and sub-ice communications. Those are all technology developments that are really needed for Ocean Worlds exploration at some point down the line. There's precedent from calls like icy cold tech and sesame. And there's current calls, so, so those three were, were in some ways, were either, you know, astrobiology-focused or Ocean Worlds, icy worlds-focused. There's also the more general technology maturation programs, such as Picasso and Matisse, as well as P-Star for fieldwork. There certainly is some great fieldwork that can be done at Ocean World analog research sites. There's also the idea of dedicated test facilities, whether it's a cryobot test facility or a, you know, a cryo-chamber that can be used as a community resource. These are all things that we should think through strategically as a community to help really build the, the potential investments in technology, so that, so that those technologies are there when we need them. And then what is an Ocean World? I'll take, I'll take this one, too, Mike. So, so this is really an important question. And so, you know, I'm sure we're going to have some heated debate, but I wanted to at least give some ground rules as to, you know, what is considered an Ocean World for the purposes of this working group. So the, this working group was formulated under OPEC, SBAG, and now. So those are all under the NASA Planetary Science Division. So even though the Earth is our favorite Ocean World, we all love the Earth, we all live here, we are focused on oceans beyond the Earth in this working group. Certainly, you know, you can make great cases for analog research locations on Earth, and, and those are relevant. But in terms of sort of like straightforward Earth/Ocean science research, that's beyond the scope, that's beyond the purview, that would really go under more Earth science. And then second, the Ocean Worlds Working Group is focused on missions that explore Ocean Worlds. And so while, again, we love exoplanets, exoplanets are really cool. There weren't any exoplanets when I was in, when I was an undergraduate astronomy major. That was crazy talk. And so it's been amazing to see over the course of, you know, mumbling years, how many ocean, how many exoplanets we have now. But the Ocean Worlds Working Group is focused on missions that explore Ocean Worlds. And so we're going to focus on our solar system, places that we can actually visit. So exoplanets, you know, and again, you know, you can make some great analogies, and, you know, there can be Ocean Worlds in our solar system, and there, that are analogs perhaps for exoplanets, and so that's fine. But the primary focus of this working group is going to be our solar system. So we're going to include bodies that currently either have or may have substantive subsurface liquid water reservoirs. So those include worlds like Europa, Ganymede, Callisto, Mimas, Enceladus, Diony, Titan, Uranian satellites, Triton, Ceres, Pluto, and maybe some large KBOs. So we explicitly do not include Mars or Venus, which could have had ancient oceans. And we explicitly do not include Io. It's not that I don't love Io, but a magma ocean is not a liquid water ocean. So we are defining ocean for the purposes of this working group as a liquid water subsurface ocean. And, you know, we can, we can certainly split hairs about Titan with its surface, you know, hydrocarbon liquid reservoirs, but Titan very likely does have a subsurface liquid water ocean as well. And so Titan is certainly included explicitly in this working group. Any thoughts on this one? Yeah, and James, you're splitting hairs about whether a liquid water ocean counts as a cryomagma ocean. We're just not going to use the word magma in this, okay? We're talking about liquid water. You can argue the, the plumbing and the definitions of cryovulcanism as much as you want. And so we're going to have breakout sessions, and one of them will be, you know, what is an Ocean World? So feel free to bring semantic discussions there. And Leah's going to moderate that one. So, you know, be nice to Leah, she's awesome. Okay, so, so we're, yeah, and, you know, we appreciate you being difficult, James. Yeah, and Tim, you know, that would, it would be fun, but we certainly don't want to, we certainly don't want to destroy the Arctic or the Antarctic in the process of, of studying it.
So I turned on my mic. That's what I was wondering about. I mean, obviously, we don't want to drill into one of the subsurface lakes in Antarctica, because those are gecko systems potentially, that we don't want to screw up. But what if we make our own? So find a place that doesn't have a subsurface lake, drill down, oh.
I just realized I had my microphone in the room.
I just realized I had my microphone in the wrong place. So drill down through Antarctic ice to a, to a location that does not have a subsurface lake, flood it with warm water to melt a pocket and create a test environment. So for instance, you could do two. You could have a test environment that has ice both above and below your, your pocket or your lens of liquid water. But you could also do one where you drill down to the bedrock and then, then flood it with warm water so that you have an environment in which you can watch how the distilled water slowly dissolves the rocky materials under the circumstances of a buried ocean and how it alters over time with, you know, the potential down the road of, of after a few years of watching that happen, that you would introduce biota and see what happens in terms of the naturally occurring balance of organisms once you've given them, you know, warmth, energy in the form of warm water and chemicals in the form of dissolved mud and rocks.
That would be a really fun, yeah.
Serious money, but that is something that you could approach NASA. About this would be a valuable analog research program that would be, you know, a testbed for the technologies and a testbed for all the scientific ideas related to what could potentially happen in an outer planets ocean world.
That's a really fun idea. I think we should, I think we should definitely capture that as, you know, as we're thinking about. I mean, it's, it's, it's almost a combination of a technology investment and a fieldwork investment. I mean, these are the kind of, you know, outer solar system exploration is a generational endeavor. And so while, you know, the, the, while the ideas discussed may seem long-term, you know, in some ways, we do have the luxury of time in ocean worlds exploration. So I like that.
Yeah, and if I could just add to that, you know, this is along the lines of some other conversations that we've been having with folks about various test facilities on the, the kind of the technology front. I think you saw a bullet point about having kind of large, kind of national resources for testing cryobots and things like that at large scale. And I think that this, you know, this kind of idea would fit in with that. I think Cynthia also made a, a great point that I don't think we made on another slide is that this group, and we talked about this at OPEC, but this group is really focused on multi-decadal time scales, right? Those are the time scales that we have to live under for exploring the outer solar system because of the, the time that it just takes to, to get to places, the time that it takes to develop missions. And so, you know, there's a lot of emphasis rightly on kind of what the current environment is, the current politics, you know, what the state of the New Frontiers AO is, what the state of Uranus Orbiter and Probe flagship is in the current environment. But we're really, not that we don't, that we want to close our eyes to those things, but we're really focused on the longer time scale, longer baselines of what are the, the science priorities as we move out, you know, two decades, three decades from now. So, and longer timescales than the, the decadal survey is kind of looking at. So I just wanted to, to kind of emphasize that since I don't think it showed up on any of the other slides.
Yeah, it's a really great point. Any, any other comments? Yeah. Dale, do you want to, do you want to unmute and contribute?
Thanks. I, I tried to just write something concise there. I think that, you know, the, the point is very well taken, but about contamination. But we're going to have to face a contamination problem at some point in a place that, you know, is even more pristine than a subglacial water body in Antarctica, say.
Yeah, that's a really good point that, you know, any of our planetary protection strategy is, while certainly we don't want to contaminate any subglacial lakes on Earth, we really, really don't want to contaminate anything, you know, once we get beyond the Earth. And so, yeah, testing, testing out our strategies in a lower stakes way will be really, really important.
And, and there are actually a progression of locations on Earth that we can think about that are more or less sensitive. And we can start with the less sensitive ones, cut our teeth, and, and then move toward the more sensitive ones.
Yeah, for sure.
And Jason, you know, my response, my personal response, just speaking for myself, is, you know, well, I guess, two things. One is, you know, it should be discussed in the community. I don't think that it should be excluded. I think, you know, the, the questions are different, the, the science questions that you're, you're, one would be thinking about in those cases. And so that needs to be prioritized within the, the science goals that this community has. And maybe they're, maybe they're high. I'm not saying that it wouldn't be prioritized highly. So I would, I would not say that it's, you know, it's out of the, out of our purview of this group. And that's my personal opinion, but I think that can be discussed as well.
Yeah. And that's a great topic to bring to the what is an ocean world breakout session in a few minutes as well.
Yes. And since I have the, the slide up on possible discussion topics, so the, the kind of in the agenda, I think the next thing is to, to move to some breakouts. We do have quite a few people on. And just to, to kind of make the conversation easier, I don't know Cynthia, I think, you know, we kind of talked about if it was, you know, more than 50 people, we would use the breakout.
Yeah. I think for that threshold, well, yeah.
And, and I wanted to be clear here before we move into these. So you'll see on the slides that in parentheses, everything says not final exclamation point, because we want to emphasize that this is just, we kind of wanted to get the juices flowing in these conversations, right? So like, for instance, you know, prioritization of science goals. We don't want it to be that if you were not on this call this morning, you weren't involved in somehow, in, in, in 30 minutes, we're going to prioritize the science goals for that exploration of ocean worlds. That's not the case at all. And so, you know, this is just kind of the start of the conversation to get people interested and invested in these topics. So I don't want folks to think if you go to, you know, number three instead of number two, that you're going to have missed your opportunity to contribute. This is really just the very beginning of these conversations. So I just wanted to make that abundantly clear as we, we move forward.
Yeah, that's a really good point. And so, so what we're thinking is we'll go into breakout rooms for about, looks like until about 10:15. So about a little, you know, 25 minutes or so. We'll let you pick. You can feel free to go back and forth between different rooms. We should give you the ability in WebEx to do that if I've set things up correctly. If you get stuck in the lobby, let me know. And I think I can assign you manually, depending on what platform you're on. Sometimes if you're on a mobile device, you have trouble choosing a breakout room. So I'll keep an eye on the lobby as well if you get stuck. But what we wanted to do was kind of, you know, have some smaller group discussions. And really, you know, this is, this is a, you know, the working group is going to move forward based on community participation. And so, you know, every, every voice is welcome in these discussions. Don't feel like you have to know everything, you know, none of us knows everything. We're all kind of bringing where we are to the table. So the three discussion topics we're thinking of were, you know, what is an ocean world? So this is, this is obviously a great topic for discussion. We, and so that'll be in, that'll be in a breakout room led by Leah. And the second would be to talk about some prioritization of science goals. So we had a slide with kind of four potential science goals. And, you know, obviously, one of the hard things that I think our working group is going to need to do is to recognize that we will all move forward best if we have some degree of community consensus. And so, you know, ocean worlds covers, you know, a huge fraction of the solar system, right? It's not like Mars where everything's easy. Sorry, I, I'm ragging on Mars a little bit, I'm allowed. But, you know, Mars has one planet. And okay, fine, they can talk about atmosphere and geophysics and geology. But, you know, we have a huge diversity of locations. We have a huge diversity of questions. And we have the ability to answer some of the most important kind of science questions, I believe, in our community. And so we're going to have to make some hard choices. And I think that talking about the prioritization of science goals, you know, it's not like we're not going to advocate for all of our potential science goals, but we are going to have to make some priorities so that that will help guide, you know, future research, future missing priorities, future technology development, future calls for science research. So that's kind of discussion group two, which I will lead. And then the third is kind of what subgroups does the ocean worlds working group need? And Mike, do you want to talk about this just a little bit?
Yeah. So three is kind of the, it's where we kind of get to the next steps, the kind of the actionable things that we want to be doing. So, you know, what does the community see? You know, obviously Cynthia and I, again, have our ideas, but we don't want to impose those on the community. We want to hear from the community and, and lead the community in the direction that the community wants to move. And so talking about kind of what subgroups are, are most immediate, given that, you know, we have 73 people on this call and everyone has limited time, kind of what are the highest priority things to tackle at the moment? And so that's what we'll be talking about in that group.
Excellent. Yeah, and, and I see, yeah, Catherine's comment in the, in the chat too about whether we're going to have additional formal membership. Yeah, so after we come back, we'll talk about, we'll talk about the kind of what the structure is. But we're, our, our thoughts are that, you know, that, that's part of what the subgroups would do is, is move forward in a, you know, kind of ground level up way, grassroots way. That was the word I wanted. Of, you know, kind of like developing things to work on and then organically evolving as we, you know, report out and then we move forward. So rather than a more formal, you know, kind of steering committee kind of structure. But that's our initial thought. And so if you have thoughts about that, please come and join breakout room three. Any, any more kind of general thoughts before we go into, into these breakout sessions? Awesome. Okay. I am going to start the breakout sessions. So I'm going to end them at 10:15, so that's half an hour from now. At 10:15, we'll all come back into this more plenary session. The, each of the three of us will give kind of a little report out from our, from our discussion groups, our breakout sessions. And then we'll talk a little bit about our philosophy for the structure moving forward of the working group and kind of next steps. So let me try this. So you should see in your participants menu, if you have screens open, that there are, there's an option for breakout sessions and you should be able to join.
Are there supposed to be phone numbers?
Okay, it looks like we're back in the main room. See if we got most people back. There we go. It's like that worked okay. Did yours go okay, Mike?
We are back. I think it went all right.
Excellent. That's great. And Leah reported that not many people were in the what is an ocean world session. So I think we just have the two main ones to report out, although if you have a few topics, we can do that as well. Awesome. So I think we wanted to report out a little bit on the discussions in the working groups. We had some really great thoughts and participation at science schools one. I'm hoping that you did that you did as well. And yeah, Leah and I are in the same room in real life, which is awkward. Um, okay. Mike, do you want to go first?
Yes, I am just trying to manage way too many screens. Hopefully you can see the slides. Let's see if I can make them bigger and then have to not that these are critical. Maybe you can go Cynthia while I kind of organize this. I apologize.
Sure. And I just kind of took notes. I took messy notes in one of the PowerPoint ones in one of ours. There we go. So this is not, and, and I want to thank Julie for taking some better notes. So we'll, we'll capture, you know, we captured as much as we could during it, but here are just some thoughts that I wanted to, wanted to share as we regroup here. So we had some really good discussion and also at the very end, we had some discussion of kind of the relative prioritization or the flow between these goals. There was really a sense that, that we need to prioritize. We need to prioritize these, that, that all of these goals are important, but that to make the ocean worlds working group useful, we really need some prioritization. And so that's one of the things that we're, we're absolutely going to take forward. We had some discussion about, so we've moved really, so, so there's completing the inventory of ocean worlds. We had a great point that this is, we really need to do this as a requirement to determine how ocean worlds form and evolve. And that we really need to consider both current ocean worlds and past ocean worlds. We did have some good discussion about whether, you know, back on the topic of exo, exo worlds, exo moons, I guess, and Earth's oceans, you know, and so that'll certainly be a continued topic of discussion. You know, I do think that considering them as analogs to ocean worlds in our solar system makes a lot of sense, but considering them kind of in above themselves really feels to me like it's beyond the purview or the scope of the ocean worlds working group, but that certainly can be open to, to continue debate, and I imagine it will be. We talked a little bit about, so previously we had said characterize ocean worlds to assess their habitability and search for biosignatures. We've kind of moved biosignatures into the one that's listed as four right now to really make that a more biosignature focused one, and then a cleaner break with, you know, habitability. So is this place habitable versus it being inhabited with really a biosignature detection? We had some discussion about where plumes and magnetic fields would go. You know, there's a fine line between characterizing a plume, whether that counts as remote sensing, or whether that should be more in like the institute exploration. And I think that the, you know, I think that a plume sample return is kind of the case that, that transitions between the two. So I think we'll continue to have some discussion there. We talked about, we've added, so, so the determine how ocean worlds form and evolve, we had had just geophysics. And so it was pointed out, we should make sure we include, you know, a broader scope of characterization that includes geochemistry, geology, et cetera. So we'll need to work on, on broadening that goal as well. That comparative studies of ocean roles as well as individual ocean roles, how they evolve will be important. And we talked a lot about the context for future astrobiology missions, how, you know, biosignature detection, astrobiology is an important aspect of ocean worlds exploration, but that studying the context is also super important. And so we're going to have to have both aspects really driving future mission goals, future research, for future background. We talked about how, and this isn't captured in the slides, but how, how theory and lab work and field work are really going to be important scientific components of all of these science goals. They really support all of them. And then we talked about, you know, again, about institute exploration, whether studying plumes or magnetic fields, kind of where they go, but also about planetary protection levels and categories, both for institute exploration and for sample return, and what research we can advocate for that can help with, with kind of better characterization and clarification of planetary protection categories, because that's going to be important. Any brief things that I missed that folks who are in this breakout session want to bring up? And I want to thank everyone for some great discussion and participation. No, okay. I will stop sharing and pass it over to Mike.
Yeah, thanks. And I actually took notes. Whoops. Can you see, hopefully you can see a Word document, because I just opened a document.
Yep.
Is that the case? Okay, great.
No, no, you're awesome.
We had like 15 ish people in our group that, that came and went. And I want to start with something that said, like, was vocalized and put in the chat right as kind of the bell was ringing. We could all watch the countdown. And it's a really critical question. And so I kind of moved it to the top because we didn't have time to discuss it. But the question is, what are, what are really these subgroups for? What are, what are they doing? We need to have actual activities coming out of them. And that's a really fair point. So we talked for, you know, 20 minutes or so about the possible subgroups we can have, kind of the important categories of things that as a community we need to talk about, basically. But, but what is actually coming out of these? And it's, it's difficult maybe to determine what subgroups we need unless we know what they're doing. So for, just as examples, if we're generating a technology roadmap that, that can inform the subgroup that we need to, or subgroups that we need to support that. Are we generating strategies documents that informs the, the subgroups that we have? And so I want to point that out as kind of a first step. In our actual discussion, we kind of started with kind of the suggestion of maybe three different subgroups, kind of a science, science goals, science priorities subgroup, and a technology subgroup, and an RNA subgroup was kind of, kind of the basic ways of thinking about things. And this is actually aligns with a lot with how Cynthia and I have been thinking about things as well. But then we talked about kind of other things that, that we might need and how these, whether we kind of split these or lump these. So in technology, you could separate these into different categories. You could have something on, you know, a technology subgroup that's focused on instrument development versus one that's about ocean or exploration access technologies, so like landing technologies and things like that. And I have lost the chat. I can see things pop up, but they fade way too early. So somebody can, can please just, just jump in. There was some discussion of kind of having a subgroup that's specifically devoted to decadal level strategic thinking. It was pointed out that, you know, maybe this type of strategic thinking needs to, to go in each of these. And I think that it certainly does. But having a kind of a breakout or its own kind of higher level, how do we make the next decadal work for us? How do we prioritize things? And kind of under this, I folded this idea that came in through the, through the survey that, that kind of caught my and Cynthia's eye is to organize ourselves or some of these subgroups based on time scales. So like you could have a subgroup that's focused on the next five years. And under that, you have the technology, the RNA, the science priorities, something that's focused on the next decade or the next two decades or the 50 year time horizon, and thinking about technologies and science goals and, and missions. And that's a really interesting way of organizing that kind of, I think, avoids maybe some of the conflicts that we have as opposed to, I think we all agreed in the, the group that we don't want to have a Europa subgroup and a Enceladus subgroup and a Titan subgroup. And so, so trying to find ways that, that bring us together rather than kind of pulling us apart is really important. And I think the group was, was pretty intrigued by this idea of, of organizing by time scales and, and how that could help us develop really a longer term strategy, especially if we're thinking about something like putting together a strategy document, which would hopefully have kind of, you know, a, a timeline, you know, for, for exploration. We talked some about whether astrobiology could be its own subgroup, and if there's kind of cross cutting topics that should be kind of standalone subgroups. Discussions of about response and advocacy subgroups, how, how do we really push these ideas forward with the, the decision makers and NASA and elsewhere? There is a fair amount of discussion about having, or potentially having an early career subgroup and how that kind of, what that group, if there's value in that, if that is overlapping with things that now is already doing and what the role of early career individuals are in, in these subgroups. And I, you know, I think we'll talk about this in a minute. Oh, actually, our time is almost up. But we do want a lot of early career participation in these subgroups, potentially leading them. Everyone is welcome. And we're also thinking about mentoring possibilities as well. I didn't see what, how, how late the time has gotten. So maybe I'll wrap up there. But we talked some about mission concepts and how to avoid being competitive sensitive was, was a focus and how much overlap we have between these groups and how to bring things together as well. But I will stop there. Didn't realize what time it was. We're having too much fun. So I apologize.
No problem. That's great. Do you want me to share the, the rest of the deck here? Let me just take that.
Sure. If we can just skim through it in just the last two minutes.
Okay. So we are basically looking at, so, so some kind of like fundamental final closing thoughts here. From the survey, the community response really seemed to support kind of a lean, simple structure for the ocean worlds working group, which is kind of what we're leaning toward as well. We want to make sure that there's a lot of opportunities for early career folks to participate as well. And so we're looking at, our current thoughts for organization are to have two co-chairs. So the initial ones are me and Mike, rotations every three years. That's a cadence that's typical of the AGS. We are accountable to OPEC, S VAG and NOW. Our thoughts are to not have a standing steering committee, and that's different from what the AGS and NOW have. We really want to make sure that, that community, broad community participation is possible and is available for everyone who's interested. So rather than having a formal steering committee, we're talking about having ad hoc subgroups that are formed as needed. These will be organized by the co-chairs, but there's lots of room for participation and leadership. We want to make sure that early career folks have room to participate. We want to make sure that grad students have an ability to be mentored. So we might build a grad student mentoring program. And we want to make sure that people reach out and volunteer to, to, you know, be part of this. So our future plans are to basically, and I'm sorry, we're going to get kicked out of the room in one sec. So in one minute, watch for a future survey on subgroups, volunteer to help or join them. Our current goal is to have a group structure and a meeting cadence in place by this fall, 2023. Make sure to sign up for our mailing list to get notified of upcoming events. So you can just Google OWWG, or you can go to the link right here, click on mailing list at the top left, join. And Mike and I are always open to feedback. So I want to value people's time and end on time. But I just want to thank everyone for joining us. And we really appreciate your feedback and input. Mike and I are going to continue talking about this. And so stay tuned. Let us know. And you can always reach out to us. And yeah, the slide package, we're going to post on the ocean worlds working group webpage as well. So stay tuned for that. Make sure you're on a mailing list to get more info.
And thanks, everybody. Appreciate your time.
Take care. We'll talk to you later.
Thank you.